First off, the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors recently named Paramount a winner of the Green Leadership Awards. This award was for growing the urban forest of sustainable Paramount, a campaign of citywide tree plantings that we began in 2017. This has led to the addition of more than 300 trees to the 8,000 we already have in spaces throughout the town. We'd like to show a few moments of that board meeting of the supervisors.
And now I'm happy to present the 2019 Green Leadership Awards. We're recognizing today the winners of the county's annual Green Leadership Awards program. And the Green Leadership Awards are about honoring residents who have gone above and beyond to improve Los Angeles County's environmental sustainability. Whether it is discovering new ways to conserve water, planting trees, or utilizing renewable energy, this year's winners inspire us to make every day Earth Day. Last but not least, the city of Paramount. In 2017, the city began its first citywide tree planting program throughout parks and public open spaces. In the past two years, they've planted more than 300 trees. They engaged members of the community to participate and take the opportunity to educate residents on other sustainability efforts. Here to represent the city of Paramount is Mayor Tom Hanson, their Public Works Director, Adriana Figueroa. And Mayor Hanson, would you like to say a few words in accepting this?
Thank you. Appreciate it. On behalf of my city, I want to thank the Board of Supervisors and Supervisor Hawn especially for this wonderful recognition. We know how important it is to be ecologically friendly in our communities now and into the future. Paramount has taken many measures over the years to make this green. Our sustainability efforts date back to the 1980s.
A few years' time.
Yeah, a few years, right? Way before my time, I'll tell ya. The commitment to being environmentally sensitive is even stronger today. This award is a great validation of those efforts, and we again thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is to proclaim May 18th as National Kids in the Parks Day in Paramount. This is a day of outdoor play designed to connect kids and families with their local, state, and national parks. We're very proud of our recreation department in Paramount and all the offerings and activities that are provided to our residents. These issues are critically important today as too often our children are involved in dangerous situations. As such, we want to take part in this celebration and acknowledge the important role that parks play in our lives. We will be sending a proclamation to the National Park Trust which sponsors this day. Children's Health Mental Health Awareness Week, May 2nd through the 9th, is Children's Health Awareness Week, when communities around the country raise awareness of the mental health needs of American youth. This focuses on the importance of caring for every child's mental health. It also reinforces the idea that positive mental health is essential to a child's development. These issues are critically important today as too often our children are involved in dangerous situations in schools that can be traced to mental health issues. In Paramount, we support the observance of Children's Mental Health Awareness Week. We also are recognizing Community Family Guidance Center for the work they do with families in our community. Would Bill Zinko of the center please come up and accept our proclamation? As we do every year, the city council is proclaiming May as Education Month in Paramount. The city and Paramount Unified will be honoring students and teachers as well as those involved with Paramount Education Partnership or PEP. It's a very special time for us to celebrate education and join the school district, or with the school district. The strong relationship between the city and PUSD is kind of unusual. Over the years, we have worked together in so many positive ways that have helped Paramount thrive. Before we get started, I'd like to thank Zorilla Carrera for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you again. She was a PEP Scholar winner last year, and as you will see in a few minutes, her sister is receiving one this year also. Zorilla attends Cal State Long Beach and was featured in one of the short PEP promotional videos we produced. In fact, we'll play the video now that features Carla Macassola Rodriguez, another scholarship recipient tonight.
The Paramount community has a longstanding mission: to invest in our youth. PEP makes education beyond high school more obtainable through financial support for you, our young people. We invest in you because your success helps our entire community thrive.
We believe in our students, and we want them to be successful. Keep watching to see the story of two recent scholarship recipients learn how the PEP program has affected their lives and influence on how they view their futures.
I am currently attending the California University of Long Beach, and I am majoring in psychology.
It's my freshman year, my first semester, and I'm studying criminal justice, but I'm also thinking about doing communications.
There was at some point where I knew I wasn't going to be able to attend college, but with the help of many organizations and grants, I was able to attend.
The way I heard about the PEP Scholarship Program was I was at the College and Career Center at my high school, and I was looking at the local scholarships, and PEP just caught my attention. Some of the requirements for it were for me.
When I received the news that I was one of the recipients of the scholarship, my reaction was excitement. I was grateful, and I couldn't stop smiling the entire day.
What I hope to do after graduation is a public speaker, a motivational speaker, or with the criminal justice path, become a transportation securities admissions agent.
After graduation, I really want to become a school counselor, to give back to the community, to help out and guidance those students who are in need.
What I would say to other students about applying for the scholarship is take the opportunity, because college is expensive, but this is a way for you to get support.
Don't feel that you're by yourself or alone, that you don't have opportunities. There's always someone willing to help you out. So just take the opportunity, and you don't know where you might end up.
The city of Paramount supports and believes in you.
Apply for a PEP Scholarship today and see where your education takes you.
Now let's give a warm welcome to the members of the Paramount Unified School District Board of Education and District Superintendent. Please come up if you were able to attend tonight. Board President Carmen Gomez. Vice President Vicentina Corenta. Board Member Sonia De Leon. Board Member Linda Garcia. I believe Linda's still in the hospital. Actually, I'll say a little bit about that. I don't think everyone knows that. I do know a little bit about it. Linda's in the hospital, has been for probably about a month now, maybe a little more. She's awaiting a double lung transplant. She has a lung disease. She's kind of prey up on the list, so any prayers she would certainly appreciate. Thank you. Board Member Vivian Hanson and Superintendent Dr. Ruth Perez. Okay, first off, we'd like you to meet two very special students from Paramount High School's class of 2019. Please join us. Fall Victorian Jasmine Gomez. Congratulations to you. Jasmine and Jamie are both PEP Scholars. Also, both will be attending UCLA. Last year, we created a program to celebrate Paramount High School students who are college-bound seniors with the highest grade point averages in their class. They are featured on street banners along the Boulevard of Scholars that runs on Alondra between Downey and Paramount. We have expanded the program this year to recognize the top five community volunteer students and the top five Momentum students. These students will have banners at the Civic Center. All the banners will be in place through August. Tonight, we are giving everyone miniature versions as a memento. First, we will bring the top academic students. Normally, they're 25. This year, however, we had a bigger class with 27 members. Also, as we recognize our friends tonight, our city manager John Moreno will help out by reading everyone's name. If you were able to make it this evening, please come forward when Mr. Moreno calls your name and college. Okay, Mr. Mayor, you want to step in front of the podium and line up? Alrighty. Okay, our first one is Ms. Jasmine Gomez, who will be attending UCLA. Next, we have Jaime T. Perez, who will also be attending UCLA. Next is Joanna E. Romero, who will be attending UC Irvine. Next, we have Maximilian F. Chow, who will be attending UC Berkeley. Our next scholar is Joseph W. Garcia, who will be attending UC Irvine. Next is Raul Placencia, who will be attending UC. Now we have Daphne Cohen, who will be attending UC San Diego. Next is Daisy A. Santiago, who will be attending Cal State Long Beach. Next student is Jesús A. Castellam from UCLA, or is going to UCLA. Next, we have Edgar Armos Navarro, who will be attending UC Davis. Next is Jacqueline Lopez, who will be attending UCLA. And here's another Bruin, Ms. Natalie J. Benitez. Next, we have Nicole Reyes, who will be attending UC Berkeley. And yet another Bruin, Mr. Mayor, Marisol Torres. Next one is Jan Reyes Villavazol Calpoli Pomona. Next is Celeste Mota Campos from UC, or will be going to UC Santa Barbara. Next is Daphne D. Cruz, who she will be attending UCLA. Giselle Rios, who will be attending UCLA as well. Next is Anai J. Soler Alonso, who will be attending UC Irvine. Next is Jason Arabia, who will be attending UCLA. Eric Hernandez, who will attend UC Santa Cruz. Next, we have Jose A. Velasquez, who will attend Cal State Long Beach. Next is Mariela Zargosa, who will attend UC Irvine. Next is Katrina C. Banong, and she'll attend Cal State Long Beach. Next is Jennifer Cuevas, who will attend Cal State Fortin. Next is Destiny Telles, who will attend UC Irvine. And our last one, Mr. Mayor, is Ms. Jasmine Betergon, who will attend UC Irvine. Next is Kadil A. Gill, who served 504.2 hours. Serving a total of 509 hours is Brandon Pastaleen. Next is Angela M. Zamudio, with 747.5 hours. And finally, with a whopping 810 hours, Zarelia Corera. Next, say hello to the top five Momentum students. These are students who overcame obstacles in their early years at school and became successful graduates. First one is Chanel Lee. Chanel? The next Momentum student is Giselle Reyes. Giselle? And the next one is Angel Arivalo. And the next one has the same first name as our superintendent, Ms. Ruth Rivera. And finally, our last Momentum student is Carolyn Butler Tanner. Teachers of the Year. So these were some of the finest pirates. And once a pirate, always a pirate. Which I happen to know a little bit about. Having, I have to add this in, they didn't let me say it. Having graduated from the Great Class of 1963 for Paramount High. The finest teachers at Paramount Unified now. Every campus in the district names a Teacher of the Year. We'd like to introduce them to you, say thanks for their outstanding work, and present them with a gift bag. Please come up as Mr. Moreno calls your name and school. Thank you. Alrighty, sir, ready? Okay, our first Teacher of the Year is Teresa Ibarra from Early Childhood. From Alondra School, we have Richard Brainard. From Cohen School, we have Autumn J. Altier. From Gaines School, we have Jenny O. Neff. From Hollydale School, Cassandra Eckley. From Jackson School, Javier Arozaz. From Jefferson School, Becky Chong. From Arkepple School, Leo Rodriguez. And from Lincoln School, we have Stacy Norman. From Los Cerritos School, we have Diana P. Velas. From Mokler School, Kristin San Miguel. From Paramount Park School, Felicia E. Kumol. From Roosevelt School, Unae Grace Chung. From Tanner School, Sarah Aiken. And from Wirths, this doesn't look like Christine Thompson, but Christine Thompson, well, they named that name anyway. From Zamboni School, this doesn't look like Joan, but Joan S. Camilling. Keep moving on here. Pointa Vista School, Emily Martin. This is not Emily Martin, so we're just naming them, making sure everybody gets the recognition. Paramount High West, Adrian Pasqua. There we go. And it looks like the last three were not able to make it, but we'll announce their names anyway. From Paramount High School, Jessica Walker Miller. From Paramount Adult School, Juan Navarro. And lastly, from the Odyssey Academy, Kathleen Kilkeny. Now we move on to Paramount Education Partnership. Please welcome members of the PEP Board of Directors who were able to make it here tonight. Chairman's Matt Canaby of Englanderd Canaby &amp; Allen. Is Matt here? Vice Chairman, John Tankley of Morcon Vinegar USA. Board Member Glenn Cosson of World Energy. Board Member Dr. Max Martinez, he's on vacation. Board Member Dr. Perez. Melendez of Northgate Markets. We appreciate the time, leadership, and advice that you provide throughout the year. PEP was founded in 2004. Since that time, it has awarded more than $1 million in college scholarships. This year, PEP is giving out a record 46 scholarships worth $144,000. Our business community has been very generous since beginning with financial support. This program would not be a success without them. Each donor receives a special window sticker like the one on the screen. Is it up there? Yep. Can anybody see that? We'll leave it up. If you see these stickers around town, please patronize those businesses. Tonight, we're recognizing this year's donors who gave $5,000 or more to help our youth pursue their educational dreams. Anyone from these companies, please come up. Morcon Vinegar, we already have John here. We also have some smaller fundraisers throughout the year. For instance, the admission prize to the Halloween haunted house went to the scholarships. At our photo sessions with Santa and the Easter Bunny, our photographer, Ken Mazzuia over here, donated a portion of his fee. Thank you, Ken. We appreciate that. To introduce you to the latest recipients, I want to acknowledge the Scholarship Selection Committee. These volunteers read and rated every application. There were 125, so it took a lot of time. If you are here tonight, please stand up when your name is mentioned. Our special thanks. Go to Flora Seguayo, Paramount High School. Paramount Iceland Zamboni Merchandising. Adrian Landon, Assembly Member Anthony Rendon's office. Dr. Myrna Morales, Paramount Unified. Dr. Mary San Miguel, Paramount Unified. Dr. Ryan D. Smith, Paramount Unified. Dr. Deborah Stark, Paramount Unified. Dr. Randy Stevens, Paramount Resident. Mordeus Talmentes, Paramount Unified. Sandra Witchell, Morcon Vinegar USA. PEP scholarships are given to students attending two- or four-year college or technical school and range from $1,000 to $4,000. The selection is based on academics, an essay, outside activities, future goals, and economic need. Joining us is Adrian with certificates of recognition for each recipient from Assembly Member Rendon's office. Adrian? What happened to announce? The PEP Scholarship winners for 2019. If you are here, please come up when your name and college is mentioned. Okay, Mr. Mayor, you ready for 46? So I'm gonna ask the audience if you can hold your applause, because there's 46 of them, so we'll announce the names, and we can give them all one big round of applause afterwards, and you can see their picture and their name. I'm sorry, not their photo, but their names on the screen. Alrighty, here we go. First one is Melissa Munoz Cerritos College. Daniel Garcia Ramirez, Cerritos College. Gloria Gonzalez, Rio Hondo College. Evelyn Buonwelllo, Cerritos College. Mariona Smith, Cerritos College. Jenny Gonzalez, Cerritos College. Stephanie Garcia-
Stephanie Garcia, Long Beach City College. Stephanie Duarte, Cerritos College. Elizabeth Reyes, Cerritos College. Andromeda Rodriguez, Long Beach City College. Marisol Torres, UCLA. Brandon Pastelain, undecided. Drew Pickett, Cal Poly Pomona. Ethan Percy, Loyola Marymount University. Angela Zumido, Vanguard University. Yanet Lopez, UC Santa Barbara. Anthony Rodriguez, Mount St. Mary's, Los Angeles. Joseph Garcia, UC Irvine. Jocelyn Munoz, UCLA. Eric Hernandez, UC Santa Cruz. Ricardo Maravilla, UC San Diego. Thiara Nunez, Cal State Fullerton. Jennifer Ruiz, UCLA. Anthony Yepes, UC Irvine. Nyleen Gonzalez, UC Irvine. Andrea Mercado, UC Irvine. Giselle Rios, UCLA. Daisy Santiago, Cal State Long Beach. Zaira Carrera, UC Santa Cruz. Kelly Flornon, Ursulin College. Judith Murillo, UCLA. Carla Rodriguez Picasso, Cal State Long Beach. Marlene Ortiz Rios, UC Riverside. Nancy Rodriguez Whittier College. Angie Vasquez, Cal State Fullerton. Andrea Beldras, UC Irvine. Talisa Jackson, Howard University. Daniela Torres, Cal State Long Beach. Michael Torres, Johns Hopkins Peabody Institute. Gerardo Zarrosa, Cal State Long Beach. Ruby Carvajal, Cal State Long Beach. William Estrada, Cal State Long Beach. Luisa Gonzalez, UC Irvine. Briano Ruiz, Cal State Dominicus Hills. Daphne Collin, UC Santa Barbara. And Christopher Duran, UCLA. That's now a big one, welcome everybody.
Over the last few years, the school district has given very generously during the annual Pennies for PEP campaign in March. This year, encouraged by Dr. Perez and the district team, Paramount Unified School District brought in $97,000 for the scholarship. That brings their three-year total to an astonishing quarter of a million dollars. That effort deserves a big round of applause. One way they do this is by setting up a March Madness tournament. The following schools made it to the Elite Eight this year. Jackson, Alondra, Wertz, Paramount Park, Adult Education, Zamboni, Mokler, and Tanner. I'd like the principals from each school to come up and receive a basketball trophy from the city and other awards from Dr. Perez. If they're all here, please come up. That will recognize the individual schools that were most successful overall. They will receive a PEP piggy bank to display at their schools. If I could have the principals, please come up when your school name is read. In the $3,000 Club, we're Hollydale with Lisa Dundee-Macon. And Los Cerritos with Hilda Verdugo. In the $5,000 Club, we have Zamboni and Sue Sackely. And they're not going back with their doodle fisher. The $15,000 Club consists of Alondra, and Lynn Butler, and Paramount Park, and Kevin Longworth. And the $30,000 Club is Jackson and Principal Kelly Anderson. Jackson has collected so many pink pigs over the years that they are receiving a special blue one tonight for the Sam. Once again, this year's top fundraiser was Jackson and Principal Anderson contributing a remarkable $30,000. Great job. And for this milestone, they will receive championship T-shirts, a staff dinner party, and a field day of fun for the students. They also get a special championship belt this year. Another one. Yeah, we also have a piggy bank for the $97,000 Club for the district itself, which we would like to present and give to Dr. Perez. In addition to these donors, we want to thank and offer our appreciation to everyone throughout the district who gave any amount to the scholarship. The fact that the district does this is a magnificent show of support for our community and a great way of promoting the concept of college to our students. This concludes our Education Month presentations. I want to thank everyone who came out. You all make Paramount proud. Go throw it in again. And for all of our students still here tonight, don't forget, once a pirate, always a pirate. Now we're going to take a short break. City Council Public Comment Updates.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We do have one update from the April 16, 2019 council meeting. The resident that came to speak before you was Ms. Diana Dolores from Hunstaker Avenue. And her issue at the time was vehicles doing donuts and other dangerous maneuvers at the intersection of Hunstaker and Motts. The follow-up to this is we did contact Ms. Dolores and informed her of the extra traffic enforcement that will be deployed to her area. And this has been reported to Lieutenant Beragon. We are also evaluating the possibility of installing the bot dots to the intersection like you've seen around town. We do have a street project that is very near this intersection, so we might pull that intersection into that overall project. And that concludes the Council Public Comment Updates from April 16.
Okay, thank you. Public comments?
Yes, sir, we do have two. The first one is from Ms. Rebecca Guian. And she would like to discuss with the Council Front Yard Gardens and the Paramount Heritage Parade. Ms. Guian?
Good evening, city staff, city council. My name is Rebecca Guian, and I live at 8427 Ives Street. As you may know, I'm a proponent of urban gardening and environmental sustainability. Paramount is considered a food desert with little agriculture accessibility within a community where 22% of our residents live below the poverty level. In an effort to be part of the solution, I would like to ask for a change in the city code, which currently does not allow for front yard gardens. Our coalition has recently received a $5,000 community grant, which will allow us to install a 3x3 or 4x4 garden box for the purpose for residents for the use of agriculture produce, growing agricultural produce in Paramount homes. Boxes would be installed free of charge, fully equipped, but the selection would require regular maintenance by the resident, crop restrictions, as well as provide regular garden checks by our garden community. We ask that you consider this request, which will not only benefit the residents and the health of our residents by introducing healthier food options, but also will benefit our environment. I'm open to any questions that staff or council may have at this time. Also, I just want to put a plug in for our Paramount Parade that we're having on June 1, just to invite the community. First time that we've had a parade in almost 50 years. And so just wanted to kind of put that out there, that we welcome everybody to come on out to Paramount Boulevard to see the parade. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker card is Ms. Gloria Fernandez of 7100 Block of Century. And she'd like to discuss with the council safety in the Hollydale area.
Good evening, I'm Gloria Fernandez. I'm back. I spoke about a month or so ago about the same issues. I'm back today, and I know we have Neighborhood Watch set up. I've been in contact with several representatives, and we have set up a Neighborhood Watch for the 18th of this month. But, two Saturdays, I know I wrote it down, so I wouldn't forget. Two Saturdays ago, a young man was fatally shot one house down from mine. My neighbors and I are shaken. I am here again because my neighbors and I still feel the lack of patrolling, especially on weekend nights. Despite past and recent expressed concerns, since the last time I expressed concerns when my neighbor's brand-new car was stolen by a homeless person, most of the neighborhood has installed cameras in our homes. We don't feel safe nor supported. Without these cameras, there would have been no evidence whatsoever of occurrence on that fateful Saturday. While discussing this shooting amongst neighbors, my neighbor who had her car stolen said that in the year that she's been living in Hollydale, she has never seen a patrol car. And I told her that in 20 years of living in Hollydale, it's a rare occurrence to see a patrol car. Ironically, the Sunday after the shooting, we saw three different patrol cars in the neighborhood, but none thereafter. After talking with Mr. Comperulis, he advised me to fill out a form for more patrol in our neighborhood. But my neighbors are hesitant about this. The last time we asked for more support of patrol car was stationed at the other end of the cul-de-sac away from the area in question, where the speeding occurs, where cars run the stop sign, where the donuts are frequent sport, where beer bottles and condoms are found. Instead, about 12 to 15 neighborhood residents were stopped for random infractions like rolling stops. My husband was one of those that was stopped for a rolling stop, pulled over. When he questioned the police officer, saying, "We were not the ones causing the chaos." The police officer told him, "Well, you're getting what you wanted." So that's why we are hesitant to ask for more patrol. We are not the problem in our community. We are actually a very united neighborhood. I know a response I've heard is that crime is everywhere. This is Paramount, but I won't take that answer. I heard a similar response when I went to a meeting regarding the recent school violence. A share of representatives say that Paramount is doing better than Compton and Long Beach. And I sat there thinking, "This is not good enough." I don't care if we're better than Compton or Long Beach. We are better than what Paramount should be. When I was growing up here, we all knew what areas to avoid due to gang activities, what areas at school to avoid, not to hang out in. But I remember when I went away to college during my new year's tenure, I believe it was, there was a huge effort to restore and beautify the city, to get rid of the gangs. And things did get better. We had more pride in our city. But unfortunately, the tide is turning again, and sadly, the schools are mirroring our streets. We must get back to being the top, the utmost to being Paramount, which is what our name means. Thank you.
Five, six, seven, eight, and nine. The consent calendar. Moved by Lemon, seconded by Hoffmeyer to approve the consent calendar. Grab Robo, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Lemons?
Yes.
Councilmember Martins?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes. Item number 10, receiving and filing a three-month review of city council permit for live entertainment for De La Cia Bar, 14123 Garfield Avenue. Staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Over six months ago, the city council approved a live entertainment permit for the De La Cia Bar on Garfield Avenue. Three months after that, staff presented a review of this permit. That three-month review presented some concerns that we had with the applicant, namely with unauthorized live entertainment incidents and a non-approved event. However, there were no real public safety incidents that occurred during those first three months. So as a result, staff recommended that the live entertainment continue at the location. So here we are at the end of the second three-month review, and Adriana Lopez will go over the item. Adriana?
Thank you, John. Good evening, Mayor, Councilwoman. As John mentioned, this is the second three-month review for the De La Cia's Bar. And I will start with just the background of where De La Cia's is located. It's located at 14123 Garfield Avenue, which is an M2 zone, heavy manufacturing. The business is owned by Jose Avnandez and operated by Joseph Hernandez, who is also the applicant in the live entertainment permit. De La Cia's is licensed by ABC for Alcohol Beverage Control for a Type 42 license, which means beer and wine for onsite consumption. And there is no access to minors to the building. At the October 2, 2018 meeting, the city council adopted Resolution 18027, which approved live entertainment at the De La Cia's Bar. A three-month review was presented to the council at the January 22, 2019, with the stipulation to conduct a consecutive three-month review, which we're doing today. So today's report includes activity from January 15 to present day. And just to give you a brief background on what the live entertainment format is, the live entertainment is approved for De La Cia's from 8:00 PM to midnight on Fridays, and also on Saturdays from 8:00 PM to 1:00 AM with a variety of types of music, including Scottish rock, 80s tribute, and DJ. Originally, his application stated that he wanted to host mariachis from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM on Sunday, but that is no longer on the calendar. And that's a choice that the applicant made. During the first three months of the approved live entertainment, we had some concerns regarding condition number four, which was to submit your calendar on time so we could see the format. And also condition number four and 33, which was not to change or alter the approved live entertainment permit without prior approval or special event permit if required. Condition number three and nine also stated that all regulatory agencies and their permits shall be valid and effective at all times. In the last three months, we have seen a lot of improvements with the applicant. First of all, the business has submitted their monthly calendar for February and March on time, as stated in condition number four. In addition, the business owner has not changed or altered live entertainment format without the prior approval or any type of special event permit requirement. And also, there are no pending ABC cases as stated in condition number three or nine. From January 15 through April 19, there have been no law enforcement incidents that have occurred at De La Cia's. And as common with any live entertainment permit, we've conducted many patrol checks to ensure that the live entertainment... to ensure that the live entertainment conditions are being followed. Our analysis for the last three months states that the applicant has maintained the requirement of having two licensed security guards, but we would like to see it on a consistent basis. And although the applicant, for the most part, has provided valet parking, on occasion, it has not been there with that service. Once again, we have not received any public safety concerns or law enforcement concerns from adjacent business or anybody else. So the recommended action at this time is that the city council receive and file a report with the stipulation of a six-month review. Then after the sixth month, we will go to an annual review if there are no reported incidents, or we can bring it back at any time, should there be any incidents. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Making motion to rescind file?
Second.
Moved by Martinez, second by Hoffmeyer to receive and file a report with stipulation for six-month review. Grab a roll call, please.
Councilmember Keen?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes. Item number 11, installation of speed hump on McClure Avenue between Howe and Rose Streets. Staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Our latest speed hump request comes to us in the north end of town, which is west of Paramount Boulevard and south of the 105 freeway. As these requests normally do, this request went before the Public Works Commission, and here's Adriana Figaro, our Public Works Director, to go over the item. Adriana?
Thank you, John. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. As indicated, the item we have before you this evening is a request for the installation of a speed hump on McClure Avenue between Howe Street and Rose Street, north of Rosecrans and west of Paramount Boulevard. The residents in the neighborhood have said that they are concerned for their safety due to excessive speeds of vehicles traveling on the street. The petition attached to your agenda contains signatures from 40 out of the 80 households that would be affected by this speed hump. Given the length of the street, the city engineer determined that one speed hump could be installed at 14030 McClure Avenue. At their April meeting, as was indicated, the Public Works Commission recommended approval to the city council for this request. A notice indicating that the council would consider this request was mailed to each household in the area. With that, it is recommended that the city council approve the request for the installation of a speed hump and all appropriate signage on McClure Avenue between Howe Street and Rose. That concludes my request. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Make a motion to approve the speed hump?
Second.
Moved by Martinez, two seconds, did I hear?
Yeah, two seconds.
Two and a second. For the installation of the speed hump on McClure Avenue. Grab a roll call, please.
Councilmember Keen?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes. Next two items we're going to reverse. Number 12 will be the overall report on the housing legislation update, Senate Bill 50. Have staff report, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Danny, if you could move it to number 13, thank you. There's been a lot of attention lately given to proposed legislation in Sacramento that attempts to improve the housing situation facing all of California. The most controversial bill that's getting a lot of attention right now in the press is Senate Bill 50. The problem with this legislation is that it simply takes away local control. If approved, the bill could really transform communities, as it would cast aside local zoning requirements when it comes to new housing developments. So here's Kevin to go over the item of Senate Bill 50, and he'll go over all the details. Kevin?
Yes, thank you, John. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. As you know, over the last couple of years, we have updated you on the status of our housing crisis in California and state housing legislation that's been proposed and passed as a result. SB 50 is yet another piece of legislation that seeks to address the housing crisis, but one that staff has a lot of concerns about because of the potentially devastating effects it can have. Before getting into SB 50, I wanted to first provide some background on the housing situation in the state. We've all heard stories about the crisis in California through the media and how the shortage in housing units is creating low vacancy rates and driving costs. As a result, Californians are resorting to doubling up or more in units, leading to overcrowded conditions in our neighborhoods, which is almost the highest in the nation. Making matters worse, we've seen a loss in housing due to the ravages of fire and flood disasters in many communities across the state. And our strong economy is also leading to income inequality issues, where those that can't afford housing are displacing those from traditional neighborhoods. Of course, you know this phenomenon is known as gentrification, which has been problematic in regions like the Bay Area and in some West Side communities in Los Angeles County, where new tech companies are bringing in high-paying jobs that's changing the local housing landscape. In 2017, we reported to you about a housing package of 15 bills signed by Governor Brown that caused concern because it made for easier housing development with less local control over review and approval. Last year, a bill by State Senator Scott Wiener from San Francisco, which would have lowered local density restrictions and allowed for housing developments up to 55 feet high. Obviously, such a law would have radically changed the character of cities across the state. Fortunately, due to lobbying efforts by cities, including Paramount, SB 827 died in committee, but we all knew that wouldn't be the last of the housing bills we'd have to defend. With new Governor Gavin Newsom coming into office this year, he has made it very clear that addressing the housing crisis is among his priorities, if not his top priority. I understand the governor's mindset. It's been a call to action for state legislators, and more than 200 housing-related bills alone have been introduced over the last year. Democrats already have a supermajority to pass any legislation, and in the case of housing bills, many Republicans may also be inclined to removing impediments to building housing in California. Which brings us back to another, which brings us back to another housing bill by Senator Scott Wiener. SB 50 was introduced in December last year. The bill is currently making its way through the policy committee process. SB 50 is considered a bill that is supposed to create transit-rich housing, or housing on properties within a half-mile of transit hubs like rail stations. In our case, the provisions of SB 50 would apply to the area around the proposed West Santa Ana branch stations at Paramount and Rosecrans, and the Green Line Transfer Station just north of Paramount in Southgate, and would affect all zones approved for housing. A letter opposing SB 50 was signed by Mayor Hanson and was sent last month. This is a graphic. You can see the two West Santa Ana branch light rail stations I just mentioned that are within half-mile, with a half-mile radius drawn around them, and you can see the stations are dark circles. As you can see, with the areas in yellow and orange, the radii capture several residentially zoned neighborhoods in Paramount, largely in the northwest, northeast, and southeast quadrants from Paramount Boulevard, from the Paramount Boulevard and Rosecrans Avenue Some of the specific provisions of SB 50 include some very dramatic changes to what the city currently allows in our residential zones, such as no density limits, building heights up to 45 or 55 feet, floor area ratios of two and a half or three and a quarter times the size of properties, and extremely limited parking requirements per unit. The thinking is that people will want to live in these types of developments because of the close access to mass transit, and they won't have a need for cars for their daily commute. And these are a couple examples of very high-density, multi-story housing developments that we've seen sprout up around Southern California and could be built as a result of SB 50. These are actually attractive housing developments, and the point isn't that these would necessarily be bad for Paramount. It's just that with SB 50, it would remove the city's local control authority in properly locating these projects in the appropriate zones. It would eliminate public hearings and take away our ability to conditionally approve such new housing. Housing developments under 50 would have to be allowed by right. In other words, it would have to be allowed without any discretionary approval. And these were examples of multifamily housing units on the West Side of the city of LA, and it presents a stark contrast to the single-family homes which are directly next door in terms of both mass and height. Clearly, these developments appear to be out of character with the rest of the single-family And with this photo, we've taken the liberty to show what a high-density, multifamily development would look like in Paramount. We've superimposed two such buildings onto a portion of facade street to again illustrate the type of change SB 50 could bring to our quiet neighborhoods. Of course, while the visual change is significant, this photo doesn't show other potential impacts such as two-street parking and public infrastructure. SB 50 does, however, have a provision for so-called sensitive communities that are deemed disadvantaged. Paramount is included in this group of cities, and SB 50 would allow delayed implementation of the provision until 2026, when a community, when communities can plan, when a community plan can be adopted to help protect against gentrification and displacement of existing community members. We're not completely clear at this point what a community plan entails, but in the end, Paramount would be subject to the same provisions of SB 50, in particular, the upzoning to allow for higher density. So to put the changes this bill would bring to Paramount in perspective, there are 6,679 single-family homes in the city today. SB 50 would allow for 20,037 more units in the existing single-family home areas, bringing the total units to 26,716. With approval of this legislative act and the stroke of the governor's pen, it could allow for almost a doubling of the housing units in Paramount. Obviously, this would be a dramatic change, as there are only 14,690 units of all types in Paramount today. So what can be done? We can continue to provide feedback and have dialogue with legislators to educate them about the unique circumstances in each of our cities, and how legislation like SB 50 can have very negative consequences. We can continue to lobby through the League of California Cities and American Planning Association. Cities will also need to craft a narrative providing constructive criticism and alternatives to help ease the housing crisis, and not simply just opposed efforts by the legislature and the governor. And finally, if SB 50 does pass, cities may have to collectively seek a legal strategy and remedy to protect ourselves. So with that, that concludes my update on SB 50. I know it's not exactly great news to hear, but I'll be happy to try to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Questions?
Been coming for a really long time, you know, so it's not, and it's unexpected, and we certainly hope that the legislators, you know, realize the kind of impact it would have on communities like Paramount, and that, you know, we would be kept informed so that we can do everything possible to make situations like ours known and lobby against something like those.
We have been, these various groups I mentioned, have been working with the legislators, including Senator Wiener, to try to give them perspective on what their legislation could do in our communities, because, you know, they come from different parts of California and may not have that same perspective. So hopefully, some more education on their part, they'll have a better understanding of, you know, what, you know, exactly their legislation may end up doing.
Intentions are good, but it doesn't seem very well thought out. All right.
Also, I'd like to add to that the League of California Cities City Managers' annual meeting for the LA County Division is coming up later this month, and we're trying to get State Senator Scott Wiener to come and do a tour of the Gateway region, just to see what, how very densely populated this area is already, and what kind of impact that his legislation would have. So, it still looks like he might come out, but we'll see. Yeah, we will definitely keep you informed.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions?
I have just a kind of a question. So what are we doing as far as the city of Paramount goes, though? Because you have to have a good argument as to oppose, and clearly you identified some of the issues, but what are we doing to say, you know, "This is too much, this is too extreme for our small city"? What kind of development are we, what's our plan, so we can come back and say, "That isn't going to work, but look at what we are doing"? What's our plan going forward right now?
Yeah, so there are a number of things that, you know, we look at. You know, there are potential ways that we could help with the housing crisis. One item that I'll talk a little bit more with the next presentation is the possibility of housing within our Clearwater East specific plan area. So that would be a place where the city could bring more housing and satisfy our housing requirements. You know, there are other things that we could look at. Some cities have looked at mixed-use type developments, where you combine, you know, a mixture of uses, like commercial, retail, and residential. That would be another way to help add to our housing inventory. But, you know, for the most part, you know, we have a general plan. We have zoning in our city, and, you know, to try to maintain order in the city, we, at this point, are advocating to, you know, maintain that zoning that we have, that, you know, for example, in a single-family residential area, that should be specifically for single-family homes, and not for multifamily homes, because that changes the character of that neighborhood. So, those are the kinds of things that we advocate for. Of course, we're, you know, we're advocating and sending in our opposition letters for bills like this, working with California cities, contract cities, et cetera.
Okay. Further questions?
Okay. Yeah, we reversed them, so it's going to be 13, public hearing ordinance number 1114. We have introduction of ZODA ordinance text amendment number 11. Staff report, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Last month, we presented to you the station area plan for Metro's proposed light rail line station near the intersection of Paramount and Rosecrans. During this presentation, we highlighted a plan for smartly developing the area within a half-mile radius around the proposed station, unlike with SB 50, what you just heard about. During that presentation, we mentioned that part of the plan would entail adoption of a zone change for the area in and around the swap meet area. This area, once again, is known as the Clearwater East specific plan area. At the moment, the Clearwater East specific plan area only allows for industrial and commercial uses, including the swap meet. Before you tonight, is a zone change that would expand those allowable uses to include residential. As I've been mentioning to you in the past, allowing for residential uses would actually bring us in compliance with current state law, state housing laws. In particular, the law requires cities to identify where they plan to put housing. And I want to make it clear that presently, the law doesn't say when the housing needs to be built, if ever. It just says, "Where do you plan on putting it"? So, anyway, that's aside from state law, the zone change would also offer to the property owner an alternative to developing strictly industrial uses at the site. So at the moment, just another note, at the moment, the property owner has expressed to us that he wants to keep operating the swap meet and has no intentions to shut down the swap meet or the drive-in movie theater. So, again, this is just allowing him options. With that, I will turn this over to, once again, to Kevin Shun, the Assistant City Manager, who will handle the item. Kevin?
Thanks again, John. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This item is a request for the approval of a zoning ordinance text amendment, or ZODA, to allow housing as an allowable use within Clearwater East specific plan area, which is needed for the city to implement its housing element and comply with state law. Currently, this specific plan only allows for swap meet, retail, commercial, office, and light manufacturing uses. The planning commission reviewed this item last month and unanimously recommended this for your approval. Again, this ZODA for the Clearwater East specific plan is necessary for a few key reasons. First, it's the final piece needed to allow the city to complete its housing element certification, as I just mentioned, to comply with the state's housing laws. It'll also prepare the Clearwater East specific-
It'll also prepare the Clearwater East specific plan area, which, as you know, is adjacent to the proposed West Santa Ana Branch Light Rail Station at the Paramount and Rosecrans intersection, for transit-oriented development opportunities, specifically housing opportunities. Lastly, it'll satisfy the state's requirement for housing, I'm sorry, it'll satisfy the state's requirement for allowing the possible development of approximately 1,000 additional units in Paramount. For some background, specific plans are a tool to allow for a specific vision for an area identified in a city's general plan. In this case, the Clearwater East specific plan is the area bounded by Rosecrans to the north, Paramount to the east, Somerset on the south, and the rail right-of-way on the west. This specific plan area was originally adopted by the City Council in 1987 and most recently amended in 2008. The proposed amendments to the Clearwater East specific plan will include incorporating housing development provisions for architectural, design, and site standards. It will also permit multiple family dwellings, mixed-use buildings, live-work units, senior housing, and parking structures as new allowable uses. I'll reiterate that these amendments to the Clearwater East specific plan are necessary to certify the city's housing element, because it just can't be understated. If the city's housing element is not certified and left in a non-compliant state, the city could be ineligible for important state transportation grants worth millions of dollars annually that the city relies on for road improvements. The state could also take legal action against the city, as we've seen the state sue the city of Huntington Beach for their non-compliant housing element. And perhaps worse, the state could take over in receivership the city's land use authority and make decisions on behalf of the city. The state has previously taken this drastic action in the city of Mission Viejo. In terms of public outreach on this issue, beginning in 2017, staff has taken many steps to keep the community informed on the city's work related to the housing element, West Santa Ana Branch Station Area Plan, and the Clearwater East specific plan. Our outreach efforts have included community meetings, information on the city's website, notices in local newspapers, public hearings, and flyers left door-to-door. So in summary, this ZODA for the Clearwater East specific plan would allow for final certification of the city's housing element, which will bring Paramount into compliance with state law. It will also set up an opportunity for transit-oriented development related to the West Santa Ana Branch Light Rail Station and creates a starting point for meeting our housing production requirements. In terms of next steps, with the City Council's approval tonight and upon approval of the second reading later this month, staff will work with the state to obtain final certification of our housing element. At that point, with a compliant housing element, staff will continue with due diligence to maintain that compliance. And staff will then seek grant funding to completely revamp and further refine the Clearwater East specific plan. We're hoping for some good news next month, when SB 1 planning grants are awarded. So at some point in the future, the City Council can expect to review this specific plan again. So with that, we ask your approval of this item, and I'll be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions before we open the public hearing?
I have a question. Prior to doing the zone change, did the, did the city request an environmental study on that land? Because I was always under the impression that that barnyard area... Was it done?
Yeah. Yeah, in 2014, there was an environmental document prepared.
I would just think, though, did we get clearance with Department of Toxics and Substance Control? Because I was under the impression, based on a conversation I had, that that area needed to be remediated, because it was toxic ground.
Brown yard, it's not a superfund site. There may be some remediation that has to be done as part of future development at the site, but that, that would be specifically looked at under an environmental impact report for development within the Clearwater East specific plan area.
So that would be done prior to any building?
Absolutely.
This is just specific for the zoning?
It is. This is just setting up the possibility for housing and redevelopment, and then any future development would have to undergo an environmental impact report.
But when we did the last zoning changes to some properties off of Somerset, didn't we do the environmental study prior to the actual change of the zoning?
Yes, that was specific to that, to that property. Since we're just opening up the whole Clearwater East specific plan area to allow for the potential for housing, there's nothing that's site-specific yet. So when there's a proposal for a development that is site-specific within the plan area, then that's when the environmental would be done.
Okay. John, it is state law that we have to do an environmental impact?
I think so.
Yeah, yes, the California Environmental Quality Act does require that.
Any building can be done, right?
Right. Okay, thank you, John.
Any further questions before we open the public hearing? No? Okay, it says a public hearing. We'll hear testimony in the following order. First, those in favor, and those opposed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Opposed?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
We move to second, and we close the public hearing. We have roll call, please.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
I'll move the item.
Second.
And moved by Lemon, second by Martinez. To read by title only. Way of further reading. Introduce ordinance number 1114, zoning ordinance text amendment number 11, and place it on the next agenda for adoption. Okay. Item 14, resolution number 19.012, approving the acquisition of property identified as assessor's parcel number 6239-009-022. Staff, staff report, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council. Each year, we receive from the county a list of properties that have defaulted on their property taxes. These properties are offered to local governments at a reduced rate prior to the properties going out to public auction. We came across one such property that, coincidentally, at the same time, came to our attention through an unresolved code enforcement case that we had on the property. The case was initiated from a complaint by area residents of unkept, the unkept land. There are no permanent structures on the property, and as you're about to see, the property is oddly shaped, and it's actually landlocked with no access to local streets. If you approve the purchase tonight, we will most likely not hold on to the property for very long, and we would offer it for sale to the adjoining property. So here's, once again, our Assistant City Manager, Kevin Shun, to go over the item. Kevin?
Thanks, John. Mr. Mayor and council members. This item is a request to purchase a parcel of land located just to the east of Mark Keppel Elementary School, near the city's western border with Compton. It's a tax-defalted property with the county of LA and is being offered for sale for $2,558. It's a very small sliver of a property of less than 3,000 square feet that is developable and doesn't have any access to the public right-of-way. This is an aerial view showing the location of the property. Keppel Elementary is in the upper-left corner and west of Huntsaker Avenue. The property is outlined in the, in a bright blue rectangle. And as you can see, because of its odd shape, it's not very usable. The property owner has been largely absent and difficult to contact, and the site has been the subject of a longstanding code enforcement case. Currently, the southern half of the property is being used by the school for parking and a metal store, and metal storage containers. The northern half is directly adjacent to a single-family residence. Upon purchase of the property, the city would approach PUSD and the homeowner to purchase portions of the property from the city. The city's initial purchase would be, the city's purchase would be through action program funds that are available in the current fiscal year. So in summary, this property acquisition will allow the city to eliminate an unmaintained orphaned property at a relatively minimal cost. So with that, staff asks for your approval of this item, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion by Lemon, second by Hoffmeyer, to read by title only and adopt resolution number 19.012. We have roll call, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes. Item number 15, resolution of the City Council, City of Paramount electing to be exempt from the congestion management program as described in California Government Code, Section 65088 to 65089.10. Staff report, please.
Yes, sir. For almost 30 years now, the state, through the Metropolitan Transit Authority, has been using a formula to calculate the transportation dollars that they allocate to cities. This formula is very antiquated, again, been in place for almost 30 years. So as a result, many cities are requesting to be exempt from this formula. In fact, the Gateway Cities Council of Government that we belong to, they voted to support those cities within the region to exempt themselves from this formula. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kevin Shun, our Assistant City Manager, once again, who will handle this item to explain more about it. Kevin?
Thanks again, John. Mr. Mayor and council members. Again, this item is a request to exempt the city from the congestion management program, also known as CMP. The CMP was initiated in 1990 to implement Proposition 111 that generates tax revenue to help relieve congestion on roads. The program is administered by Metro and uses level of service as a measurement for road congestion. The CMP philosophy is that congestion, is that congestion can be reduced by adding more capacity to roads. The CMP was pioneering as a means for reducing congestion, but it has become antiquated, as John mentioned, as the idea of increasing road capacity doesn't necessarily lead to better traffic flow. In addition, CMP is no longer consistent with current regional, state, and federal planning processes and requirements. More modern transportation efforts are related to reduction of greenhouse gas emissions and new performance metrics, such as vehicle miles traveled. The state allows cities to request an exemption from the CMP if a majority of other cities in a county also request the exemption. Working with the Gateway Cities Cog, several cities in our region have already passed exemption resolutions, with several more also expected to do the same. As a whole, so far, 38 of the 88 cities in LA County are also seeking CMP exemptions. Metro is in the process of developing a CMP replacement program that will be, that will result, that will be results-oriented, sustainable, and consistent with modern transportation standards. So with that, staff asks for your approval of this item, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Most to read by title only and adopt resolutions number 19.013.
Second.
Moved by Hoffmeyer, seconded by Lemon. Read by title only and adopt resolution number 19.013. We have staff, uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Guillen?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes. Okay, item number 16, resolution number 19.015, approving the engineer's report for certain landscaping improvements for landscaping and maintenance assessment district number 81-1, and resolution 19.016, declaring the intention to levy and collect assessment within that landscaping maintenance area. We have staff report, please.
Yes, sir. This is something that we've been doing every year since 1981, actually. Back then, an industrial park was built north of the intersection of Rosecrans and Orange. The industrial park at the time decided to tax themselves to provide for landscaping lighting maintenance for their common areas. Our Public Works Director, Adriana Figueroa, is here to tell us what's required of us each year in order to get the wheels in motion. Adriana?
Thank you, John. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the item before you includes the annual engineer's report for landscape maintenance assessment district number 81-1. The report includes plans, specification, costs, estimates, diagrams, and assessments for the landscape maintenance district in the Orange Avenue Industrial Park for fiscal year 1920. I have a map, okay. The assessment in fiscal year 1819 was $14,200. The assessment for fiscal year 1920 will be the same. That assessment will be spread among the 29 industrial parcels. Two procedural steps are necessary at this meeting. The first is to approve the city's engineer's report by adopting resolution number 19.015, and the second step is to approve resolution number 19016, declaring the City Council's intention to levy and collect assessments for certain landscaping improvements and setting a public hearing date for June 4th, 2019. That concludes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Most will move the item? Please do.
Do. Each resolution separate? So you're moving for 19.015, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, moved by Hoffmeyer, second by Martinez, to read by title only and adopt resolution number 19.015. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Guillen?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Move resolution 19016?
Second.
Motion by Lemon, second by Gillen, I believe.
Martinez.
Martinez, excuse me.
That's all right.
Read by title only and adopt resolution number 19.016. We have roll call, please.
Member Guillen?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes. Item number 17, resolution number 19.014, granting consent in jurisdictions, county of Los Angeles in the matter, County Lighting District 10066, and County Lighting District Landscaping Lighting Act Number 5, Paramount, and so forth, and resolution number 19.017, approving and accepting the negotiated exchange of property tax revenues resulting from the annexation of petition number 32.416. Staff report, please.
Yes, sir. All property owners in Paramount pay into a lighting district each year when paying their property taxes to the county. This pool of funds then is managed by the county and is used to pay for the maintenance and energy costs for our streetlights. We're all aware of the new housing development that was recently built next to the Home Depot. Since this development included new public streetlights, the property owners that live in that new housing tract, they need to be added to the lighting district so that funds can be collected to pay for the maintenance and energy costs of those streetlights. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Public Works Director, Adriana Figueroa, who will share the item with you. Adriana?
Thank you, John. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, as indicated, in order to provide funding for the operation and maintenance of new streetlights installed by a developer, the county requires the approval of these resolutions for the granting of consent and jurisdiction to the county to accomplish this annexation. The cost of the operation and maintenance of streetlights located within the Paramount Zone are funded by ad valorem property tax at an estimated annual assessment for a single-family home of $17. This is the new development. I have a little bit of a map that is located on Bracho Portillo Road between Bracho Caballo Road and Bracho Parada Road. And that is the item, and the recommendation is to read by title only and adopt resolution number 19014 and resolution number 19017. That concludes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Move resolution 19014?
Second.
Moved by Lemon, second by Hoffmeyer, to read by title only and, read by title only and adopt resolution number 19.014. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Guillen?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez? Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Move resolution 19017?
Second.
Moved by Lemon, second by Hoffmeyer, to read by title only and adopt resolution number 19.017. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Guillen?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes. Item number 18, order contract construction of the arterial street resurfacing improvements on Paramount Boulevard from Rosecrans Avenue to the north city limits. We have a staff report, please.
Yes, sir. We are ready to pave the final leg of Paramount Boulevard. It has taken us some time to do... It has taken us some time to do, do this due to funding purposes. However, overall, the funding for road maintenance is looking a bit brighter due to new funds coming down from Sacramento. So, but to go over this project, I'll turn it over to Adriana Figueroa, once again, our Public Works Director, who will handle this item. Adriana?
John, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the project area includes Paramount Boulevard north of Rosecrans to the north, to the North City Limits. This will actually finish the entire segment of Paramount Boulevard that began back in 2015, and it will go from city limits to city limits. This improvement will complement the drought-tolerant planting in the median, which was done in fiscal year 18. Bits were opened and examined on April 16 for this project. Seven bits were received with the apparent low bid submitted by Pulp Inc. in the amount of $714,417. This is above our budgeted amount of $700,000. The difference of $14,417 will be paid for with unobligated Prop C funds. The high bid was in the amount of $920,026. Although this project is budgeted in the current fiscal year and construction will start this fiscal year, the project will not be completed until next fiscal year. As a result, we will carry over the project funds into our next fiscal year budget. At this time, it is recommended that the city council approve the plans and specs award the contract for construction of the arterial street resurfacing improvements on Paramount Boulevard from Rosecrans to the North City Limits to Pulp Inc. of Long Beach, California in the amount of $714,417, and authorize the mayor or his designate to execute the agreement. That concludes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
I'll move the item.
I have one question. Have we ever worked with this company before? I don't recall hearing them before.
I don't personally know, but I can check in our...
I'm just curious. Yeah, no, we, I, this is definitely a new company towards us.
Okay, all right.
Second.
Item was moved by Lemon, second by Martinez, for the construction of arterial street resurfacing improvements. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillan?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes. Item number 19 is a public hearing, adoption of the one-year action plan for fiscal year 2019 and '20 for the Community Development Block Grant and the Home Investment Partnership Programs. We have staff report, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, before we go into the next item, I wanted definitely go back to your last question was asking whether or not we've ever used this company. I just noted that Excel Pavings is their doing business as name, and we have, we have done work with Excel Pavings, so I apologize for that.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify that. Okay, so on to item number 19. It's time once again to tell HUD, the federal government, how we plan to spend our Community Development Block Grant money and Home Investment Partnerships money. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Finance Director, Karina Lamb, who will tell you about our recommendations for funding. Karina?
Thank you, John. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, the item before you is fiscal year '20's One-Year Action Plan for CDBG and Home Funds. CDBG and Home Funds are federal dollars that we receive annually. In order to continue receiving these funds, we have some housekeeping items that we have to do. One is a public hearing that we do for the One-Year Action Plan, which is equivalent to the budget. Another public hearing is the CAPO, which is the YAM report, and tonight, we are bringing to you the action plan for your approval. For over two decades, we have been an entitlement city to receive CDBG and Home Funds directly from HUD. In fiscal year '20, we estimate to have about $1.1 million total in CDBG and Home Funds combined. CDBG and Home Funds have been making a lot of tangible improvements in our community over the years. Here is a list of CDBG-funded activities in the past. The programs have been effective, and we are recommending to do the same next year. That includes coenforcements, graffiti removal, commercial rehab program, fair housing, and also some of the funding to cover administration costs. And for Home Funds, we have used the funding for home improvements and also to cover some of them administrative costs, and we plan to do the same next year. As part of the One-Year Action Plan process, we are required to publish a notice and notify our citizens how we plan to use the funds. We have done so on March 28 to publish a notice on press telegram. We also provide funding information at the local library, and we post information on our city website. Public comment period began at that time, and so far, we have not received any comments. With that, it's recommended the council conduct a public hearing and receive citizens' comments and adopt fiscal year '20's One-Year Action Plan, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions before we open the public hearing? No? Okay, the public hearing is now open. We'll hear testimony, first in those in favor and by, second by those opposed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Opposed?
Close the public hearing?
Second.
Been moved by Hoffmeyer, second by...
Martinez.
Lemmons? Close the public hearing. We have roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
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 Move the item?
Second.
Motion by Lemon, second by Hoffmeyer, to adopt the One-Year Action Plan for 2019 and '20 for the CDBG funds and the home program. But roll call, I guess. We got to do that, don't we? Almost forgot.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes. Comments or committee reports from council members? Start down here.
Okay, thanks. I was fortunate enough to go to the SCAG conference. I never realized that the SCAG conference dealt with long-term planning for counties and cities, and we had a lot of presentations on transportation. But while I was there, I also attended the Clean Power Alliance. So Southern California Edison is what our residents were utilizing as their power. We recently switched to the CPA. They had an increase in 5%, but so did Southern California Edison. So I just wanted to reiterate that we are still going to be paying less than if we would have stayed with Southern California Edison. And then I had got, received some questions regarding FARA and CARE. If you are a FARA or CARE participant in SCE, there's nothing you need to do. You will automatically be carried over. And that's it?
Okay.
Two weeks ago, I attended the casino night here at Progress Plaza, and it was a wonderful event. I commend our staff, and as many of you know, all the proceeds go towards the PEP Scholarship recipients, and the money is towards, goes towards their college tuition, so...
Oh, yeah, last Friday night, I attended the monthly Friday night in Paramount, and seems like it doubles every, every time we go there, there's more people coming there. Everybody seems to have a great time. They have a lot of great food there and a lot of interesting things there, so I think it was very good. And one other thing is, I think we should remember the families in Colorado tonight, who, children were shot at the school, and keep them in our prayer because this is all something that happens all too often.
Other than that?
Okay, thank you. Lemon?
Just at our ad hoc city and school meeting, we, of course, had lengthy discussions about the results of what you saw tonight, the success of the PEP program and all of the outstanding colleges that our children will be attending, and I look so forward to seeing their banners on the Boulevard and the great colleges that they're going to, and just feel so blessed that we have such a great working relationship with our school district and can work together to do such great things for our kids.
Thank you. I also attended the fundraiser here at the, what was it, Taste of Italy, I believe it was titled. Had a great crowd. They did raise a lot of money again, and we saw what that benefits tonight, that does very good. Also, well, as we saw in the film, we attended the supervisors' meeting. Adriana and I drove up there. Again, thank you for driving so I didn't have to drive in that mess on the freeway. It was terrible. Took us, what, over an hour to get there, I think? But that was nice, and it was nice to receive that award. Comments from staff?
No, sir.
No comments, then this meeting is adjourned to May 21 at 5:00 p.m. at the City Hall. Okay, we call to order the successor agency for Paramount Redevelopment Agency. We have roll call, members, please, council members.
Councilmember Gillan?
Yes.
Councilmember, Councilmember Lemmons?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Here.
Mayor Hanson?
Here. Public comments? No, sir. Consent calendar, approval of minutes?
Approval of consent calendar?
It was so quick, I didn't hear it.
I moved, Darrell, second.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Motion by Lemon, second by Martinez, was it?
No, no.
Hoffmeyer. You guys are going quick here. Don't let me get it all out. That was for approval. That was the whole consent calendar, I'm assuming. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Member Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.